Good evening. Our October 10th, 2019 council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our invitational pledge will be led by members of Longview Girl Scout Troop Number 6688, Shayna Stevenson, August Hirsch, and Kaitlin Fabre. Shayna Stevenson is the 9th grade at Longview High School. She's a senior level Girl Scout and enjoys helping others as a cadet. She earned her Summit Award. August Hirsch is a home school 7th grade cadet level Girl Scout that loves playing the electric guitar and creating art. And Kaitlin is the 9th grade in his home school. She's a senior level Girl Scout. Kaitlin has earned her Bronze Award, her Silver Torch, the Presence Award, a double Summit Award, and her Silver Award. Please rise. Come forward ladies.
The prayer to be read includes many words from the founder of Girl and Boy Scouts, Lord Baden Powell. Father, Father, as we meet here today, we come before you with grateful hearts for the many blessings that you have granted us. In return, we offer our humble services to you and others. We also ask that during this meeting, that you help the city council members and attendees use their skills and judgment to gain a widened outlook and a clearer vision of all that lies before them as they make decisions concerning our community. Help them to act in accordance with what is best for our citizens. Lastly, may we go forth strengthened in our mission to spread human kindness in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies for coming and joining us tonight. We really appreciate your service to the community. Keep up the good work. Tonight in employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Judicial Services Unit from the LPD. On April 15th, 2019, Longview Police Department Judicial Services Unit was formed to handle the security and bailiff duties of the municipal court and staff of the supervisor Sergeant Aaron Clinton and two officers, Officers James Bray and Officer Chris Dotson. They completed their courtroom security training and had been providing security for all municipal court personnel, the courtroom during criminal and civil proceedings, and all city council meetings. When city court is not in session, the officer's primary responsibility is the serving of Longview Municipal Court warrants. Since starting the warrant service in mid-May of the year, they've been responsible for serving over 1,816 warrants. This includes mere contact with many of the individuals informing them of the warrant so that they could be promptly handled. The members also continue to provide support in the field to other officers when not participating in court or completing a previously assigned task. The Judicial Services Team has also provided security at many city events, providing a safe environment for all community members. Will you gentlemen please come forward? Come on up guys. All I want to say is I feel so much safer when you guys are here because y'all don't realize it. Before every meeting, they come in, they basically sweep the room, they go behind our desk, they make sure no one's trying to blow these guys up because people don't like them. Mine's fine. But they make us, they make sure that we're safe, not just in this room, but out on the streets. In every event you go to, there's always a police presence and you guys are amazing. And the courts, when you go to the courts, you do the same thing. They always are there to make sure things stay in order and civil. And serving warrants is no fun. No one wants to see you coming and to do that takes a special person because you, you do it with a, with a great intent to help people. You're not there to intimidate them and that really goes a long way. These guys are so fun and nice and to be around, you'll see, walk up to them, shake their hands, they're, they're just normal people, but they protect us in all aspects of what we do. So guys, thank you so much for what you do. Keep up the good work and keep sweeping these tables, okay? Appreciate y'all very much. Thank you guys so much. Great job. Great job. Great job. Come on, sit here. Thank you guys. Yeah, we all wore blue. Tonight in our community recognition, we're going to recognize a really special lady who has done so many things, but right now is the pinnacle of what she's done for this community and I just want to talk about her just a little bit, Nancy Murray. On April 2018, Nancy led the formation of a 26-member Cultural Arts District Task Force guaranteeing representation from Longview's key arts organizations, individual artists, area colleagues and universities, creative professionals, realtors and property managers. Nancy harnessed the talents and skills of the task force members to associate and assemble the cultural district application that was submitted to the Texas Commission on the Arts on June 2019 and scored the highest of those applications submitted in intensive and competitive review process. To sustain the initiative, Arts Longview, led by Nancy, has been formed. The original task force on Longview's newly awarded cultural district designation will provide cultural, economic, and quality of life benefits for Longview from now into the future. Nancy's vibrant leadership is a shining example of what motivated volunteerism can accomplish. And, and, come on up Nancy. Come on. Come on up here. Come on, come on, come on, come on. I know you didn't. If you did, you wouldn't have come. And, and I want to say Nancy's parents are here, her daughter's here, Judd, her husband's here. Judd and I have grown together. I've known Nancy forever. Nancy is elegant, the most elegant, tenacious bulldog I've ever met in my life. She will chomp her teeth into something and not let go till the moon comes out. And so, I was telling them earlier when we were over doing the designation that when I knew Nancy was involved with this, it was a done deal because there's nothing that she's going to take on that she's not going to accomplish. And I don't know how many of y'all realize how important this designation is for Longview, but it is, it's huge for what we're trying to do and that's become a culturally diverse community in multiple areas and this is just one of those areas that we've, we've succeeded in thanks to Nancy and this wonderful group of people that came and, and came together to do this for the betterment of the community. If you're involved in that, please stand up and there's a lot of people in the audience. If you're involved, please stand up. Come on, it's okay. Stand up. It's good. Thank you all. This was a huge undertaking that didn't just happen overnight and, and the video y'all submitted Nancy, I've watched it 100 times because it, it just, it just excites you about Longview and that's what you do. You bring excitement, you bring enthusiasm, and you bring that force that says we're going to get this done. So for Longview, for our area, for arts, for everything, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're at all. You're appreciated more than you know. Thank you so much. This is the girl you wanted on your team when you were trying to do something right there. Thank you Nancy. Judd, thank you for allowing her to do this and her parents, where's her parents? Y'all stand up. There they are, back there. Stand up. Good to see you all. I say it over and over again, we're blessed beyond belief to have volunteers in this community that's continued to develop and do things because they want to do it, not because they're getting recognition or getting paid for this, because that's not why Nancy or any of the people out here do the things that they do. They do it because it's what's good for the community and that's what makes Longview special. We're standing apart in so many ways. I hope that continues over and over again. Thank you once again Nancy. We're going to citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Mark Priestner?
I'm speaking on the billboard over there.
Okay, you want to wait and speak then?
Yes sir.
Very good. I'll hold that card. I have no other speaker comment cards. Anybody would like to speak and fill out a card later? Very well. For presentation items, presentation or proclamation to the Longview City Council from the Texas Commission on the Arts is designating Longview's Cultural Arts District Dr. Gary Gibbs.
Honorable Mayor and city council members, I've come from Austin, from state government, but with something good for you. You've already heard about the cultural district designation that we just officially made and I want to share just a few words with you as well. We're very proud of Longview and their accomplishment and their application. We have, there are only 43 such designated districts across the state. And many cities try multiple times in their application before they're successful and Longview was successful for the very first time. Part of that is because they had great support within the community, but also from elected officials such as you. So I thank you for your, your support of them and in their efforts. You're familiar with resolutions. I promise not to read all of it, but some of the wherashes and then one therefor's. Whereas a cultural district is a well-recognized, labeled, mixed-use area of a community in which a high concentration of cultural facilities serves as the anchor of attraction. And whereas the Arts Longview Cultural District demonstrates that culture, the sum total of everything that shapes the way of life in a town, can lead to transformation, revitalization, economic development, and a better, more vibrant community. And whereas the Arts Longview Cultural District embodies the passion reflected in the strong cultural and artistic heritage of the state of Texas, now therefore, here it comes, be it resolved, that on this 10th day of October 2019, the Texas Commission on the Arts celebrates the official Texas Cultural District Designation of the Arts Longview Cultural District. Congratulations, Longview.
Thank you, kind sir. We're now due a presentation of proclamation designated October 14th to the 18th as Chamber of Commerce Week of the City of Longview. Kelly Hall, come on up. How are you today?
Great.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Whereas Longview Chamber of Commerce has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 14th to the 18th as Chamber of Commerce Week in the City of Longview. Whereas we recognize the Longview Chamber of Commerce for everything they provide to the City of Longview to create a positive business climate where people can live out their dreams, they can advocate at local, state, and federal arenas, and they can have strategic plans in reach redevelopment, education, advocacy, collaboration, and health. They fight for Longview's business, representing over 1,100 companies and 45,000 hardworking East Texans. We also congratulate them in recognition of the hard and visionary work they accomplished in advocacy and education that capitulated them to receive the nationally recognized award for Chamber of the Year by the Association of Chamber of Commerce Executives. So now therefore Andy Mack with authority vested in the State of Longview proclaim October 14th to the 18th, 2019 as Chamber of Commerce Week in Longview, Texas. So congratulations, State of Longview. We, we don't, we don't normally do proclamations for the week. We do for a day. But with Kelly, everything's always bigger and it's always going to be better. So yeah, Kelly gets a week. But the chamber deserves this. The chamber has done a lot of things that are good for our community. They advocate for, as you said, 45,000 business people in the, in the community, 1,100 businesses. That's, that's important for our diversity, for our ability to communicate with one another. And so, to be awarded the outstanding chamber by, by the chamber award is just another example of how we're moving forward and making things better for the city. And I appreciate you for what you do for the community, what you do for the chamber and the businesses involved. So just keep up that good work Kelly and I hope you can top it next year. I don't know how you're going to do it, but you expect something better next year, okay? All right? Congratulations. Thank you so much. Finally, I'm taller than somebody. Okay, let's see. I'm going to bring this here so I keep going back and forth. Next, we're going to have a proclamation for the East Texas Down Syndrome Group. Ambassador Joey Wilson and his family will be coming up for that. Come on up here, big guy. How you doing man? Good to see you. Come on, right here with me, all right? Come on, we're going to read this together, all right? East Texas Down Syndrome Group Buddy Walk, October 12th, 2019. Whereas Down Syndrome is a genetic condition and the most frequently occurring chromosomal abnormality, Down Syndrome Society has created the Buddy Walk to encourage the acceptance and inclusion of people with Down Syndrome in their communities. People with Down Syndrome are members of the community and have a variety of positive ways they can contribute. The East Texas Down Syndrome Group 18th Annual Buddy Walk will be Saturday, October 12th, 2019, in downtown Longview. So now I therefore, Andy Mack with authority vested in the State of Longview proclaim October 12th as East Texas Down Syndrome Group Buddy Walk Day in Longview. Just like that, okay? Come on, right here. Okay, I just want you to know, I'd go to that Buddy Walk every single year. I have a niece, her name is Alex. Do you know my niece Alex?
Okay.
You know Alex?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know Alex, don't you? She knows all the guys, the good-looking ones especially.
Joey knows all the girls.
And she, he knows all the girls. That's my kind of guy. This Buddy Walk is so special. If you've never gone, you are missing an opportunity to go and have your heart warmed by the most incredible, fun, generous, happy, kind people in this entire world. These individuals who I just have so much respect for and their parents, they see things from a light that I wish I could see things from. Everything is good. Everything is happy. Everything is just, there's just, it's just a different view and I appreciate it so much. So I can't wait to be there. I hope you all will come and join us. It's so much fun. You walk, you enjoy, you have fun. It's a great way to just commemorate Down Syndrome and the accomplishments that are being made every single day in this area. So thank you all so much. Do all the best. Keep up the good work. Y'all are awesome. Give them a hand. Yeah, Team Joey needs some members, okay? Go get them, Team Joey, all right? Good job. Thank you all so much. Next is a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. Okay, Fire Education Specialist Scarlett Kepke, Deputy Fire Marshal David Thacker, and Fire Chief JP Stillman, come on up. You're Scarlett. Got it. Come on up. How you doing sir? Good to see you. Hey Chief. Good to see y'all. Okay, whereas Longview Fire Department requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 6th to the 12th, once again, the fire people get a week also. As Fire Prevention Week in the City of Longview, so Longview's first responders are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Longview. Did you get that? All those living in and visiting Longview. What, what a, what a responsibility you guys have. Our first responders have reduced fire-related occurrences through prevention and protection education. This year's theme is not every hero wears a cape, plan and practice your escape. So therefore I, Andy Mack with authority vested in the State of Longview proclaim October 6th to the 12th as Fire Prevention Week in Longview, Texas. Chief? Round of applause. My whole life, my dad taught me one thing. Education is the key to prevention and that's what y'all do. You educate and so we prevent. And you, you take such care in going to schools, teaching kids, teaching adults, providing so many things that people don't always take advantage of and they should. The fire, the, the smoke detectors, all the things that you all do, it makes such difference for those that not only live here, but those that come and visit here. You all do a great job. Keep up the good work because one life lost is too many. So thank you Chief, thank you guys for what y'all do. Y'all are the best. Keep up the good work.
Yes sir.
Awesome. Good job. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Appreciate y'all. Okay, we are now to Public Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. Last couple of weeks, we've been very busy over in the police department planning for one of our biggest events of the year, National Night Out. If you remember, back on September 3rd, Tuesday night, we had our National Night Out kickoff party. And this is the, the start of our, preparing for our event in October, but actually, our preparation really starts all year long because at the end of the year, we enter a contest on everything that we've done to promote National Night Out here within our community to the National Association of Town Hall. So on Tuesday night, the 3rd, we had our, our kickoff party where our residents could come and register their neighborhood watch parties for our National Night Out event. And I have a lot of photographs tonight, just kind of highlighting our kickoff party and the individuals that came and the council support that we had preparing for this event and all the other city employees and directors and departments that have come out and participated with us. So at the end of the night, we had over 250 people that attended our National Night Out kickoff party. And as a result of this, we registered 54 parties that night. So that would be the, the beginning of preparing for the first Tuesday in October, which was National Night Out. So after the registration, we started seeing all these signs start popping up in the different neighborhoods on the street corners that, hey, I'm having a party here, a party here, a party there. So Tuesday, the first Tuesday in October rolls around and we had our National Night Out event. And again, I just can't thank everybody enough that come out and participated. Everybody loved the fire trucks. I don't know why, but it seemed to be a, a big draw there, so. It was a great opportunity for our department to get out in the community and meet the residents in the neighborhoods that were sponsoring these various parties. And as you know, as part of our National Night Out event, we all always have a contest during the event to award a neighborhood as the best crime watch group in, in Longview for, for the year for 2019. So we had some neighborhoods that submitted their crime watch group as a part of this contest. We reviewed the information that was submitted and this year, the Hollybrook Cove neighborhood was selected as the best crime watch group for 2019. So we'll be going back out there and hanging signs up in their neighborhood indicating that they were, voted the best neighborhood crime watch group for 2019. So all in all, that night, we had a total of 117 parties across the city, which is, which is great. It continues to grow year after year.
From Girl Scouts, 1565, we hope you enjoy National Night Out.
Everything you do in this community is everything that we allow. We try to give crime watch groups to do. Tonight, we are here to present to you the best crime watch for 2019.
All of us who are long are really here to honor Jeff because the day of the storm, he stayed here to take care of our neighborhood, which he did take care of our neighborhood. And we are so grateful.
So I want to thank our media development team for preparing this video as a thank you to our community for the support that they've shown us and for their participation in National Night Out. I'd also like to thank Longview Regional Medical Center. One day last week, they brought a food truck, Street Licious, down to the police department and provided lunch for all the officers that were on duty one day last week. So I want to thank them and appreciate their support as well. I'd also like to give a shout out to Mickey Power. Mickey is a resident in Arabella and Arabella had an event out there where the residents out there created paintings and then they auctioned the paintings off. And Mickey auctioned her painting off and did, did fairly well with her painting and she decided to take the proceeds from that painting and brought it down to the police department, donated it to the police department for our K-9 unit to use to buy training equipment with. So want to give Mickey Power a shout out and thank her for her very generous donation and helping to support our department's K-9 unit. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Chief, how many parties did you have for National Night Out?
We had a total of 117.
Wow, good deal. How many did you make?
I made four, four.
Wow. Thank you Chief. Appreciate you. Chief Stillman.
Good evening Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to catch you up on a few things that have happened in the fire department since we last met. I'll let Sean catch up. I want to thank this little guy, Eli Kennimer. He stopped by our Station 5 a couple of weeks ago, one morning when the guys were out there checking out their truck and I think he was there just to follow up to make sure they were doing what they were supposed to be doing that morning. He hung, hung out there with them for a couple of hours, just spent a lot of time asking a lot of questions. He kind of put them through their paces and I'm telling you right now, this kid, he's wearing the right shirt, like a boss, because he said, he said he basically came in there and owned that fire station and that's great. He'll probably hire in as a captain somewhere down the road. So just, we, we enjoy having these people just stop in at random like this and we love showing people what we do and the equipment that we're fortunate enough to have. So, so thanks to Eli. Our smoke detector blitz, Mayor, you mentioned it a while ago, we're celebrating or recognizing Fire Prevention Week. To be honest with you, fire prevention never stops. We work on it year-round. We really hit it hard for the whole month of October. We kicked off this month's activities with the Smoke Detector Blitz partnering with the American Red Cross. It got us out into the community installing smoke detectors where people might have been short-some or had some, had some older ones that needed to be replaced. There's still a little bit of work to do on that. They did go to several houses where the people happened to not be home, so we'll circle back around and catch them. Because if just one of these smoke detectors wakes a family up in the middle of the night and gives them time to get out of that house that's on fire, then it was well worth the effort. So I want to thank our crews for going out and making the effort. Again, partnering with the Red Cross was huge. We love having their support and I can't think of a more worthwhile effort to help keep our community safe. We had a retirement here recently. Fire driver engineer DK Smith retired from the fire department with 20 years of service. DK was always a fun guy to be around. He took his job very seriously. He did it very well. I had the pleasure of going to paramedic school with DK about 20 something years ago when he was a brand-new employee and we had a great time. So we wish him well and what, what lies ahead for him in the future and thank him for his 20 years of dedicated service to the fire department. Our EMS subscription program has began. It started off on October the 1st, so this is an annual program. If it's, if you get, you should be getting a flyer in the mail if you've been a participant of it before to give you the opportunity to renew that. If you would like to check it out for the first time, we'll certainly go to the website, call the phone number, and we'd love to get you signed up for this. It might save you some money down the road should you ever need to engage EMS services here inside the city. And our Stop Double Bleep programs are still up and running strong. Our next community offering is October the 29th, out at the UT Tyler Longview Center Campus. This is another great opportunity to, to get out into the community, whether you go at... a work group, a church group, it doesn't matter, to learn some skills that might help save somebody's life down the road. I also want to give a quick shout out. I didn't get a slide in because I knew Chief Bishop had a pretty good video. Thanks to everybody that supported us during National Night Out. It was fun to have so many stops. I actually made six stops on National Night Out, but I started out with a list of 12. And I do it every year. I'll pick two or three in different parts of town, and I get to these things and I start talking to people, and man, an hour is gone. And I don't think I'll ever make my goal, but it was fun getting out there to half of the ones that I did. I made sure to make Miss Marie's because I knew I'd be in trouble if I didn't. But had a great time, and thanks for everybody for their support and having the fire department out. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Tillman? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
While we're still here, Leadership Longview class, come on up. I had the privilege of visiting with this group of young ladies and gentlemen earlier today. Dave, Andy, Tracy, you guys do such a great job of organizing this every year and bringing these young people together. I just wanted to recognize this group of individuals who are doing the Leadership Longview 2019-2020 class. Because the way I look at this, these are their future leaders of Longview. These are, let's see, there's more than seven of y'all, so y'all, seven of y'all are going to be up here one of these days. Because I think that's what's important, and I appreciate them taking the time to do this, the dedication. As we visited, there's a lot going on in Longview, but it doesn't happen without somebody doing something, and y'all are doing something. So keep up the good work. Thanks for being here. Thanks for the chamber, y'all organizing all this, Tracy, Dave, Andy, y'all do a great job every year. But I just think it's important that we recognize the young people that are doing this, because without that, that's the future, and the future is y'all. And so I look forward to that. We've got a bright future ahead of us. It's a great class. I enjoyed visiting with them, so thanks for letting me do that, and we look forward to seeing y'all soon. Appreciate y'all. Let's get a quick picture. We are now to consent agenda. Any items council would like to pull off for separate discussion?
Would you like to remove item S?
Item S?
Yes.
S, okay. S and L, okay. Let's see. Okay, other than that, anyone else?
I'm going to defer to those items, taken off.
Will the S and L removed? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll start with L, it's first. Mr. Bertle.
Hey, Dwayne, can you answer a little bit on this? What is a litter abatement officer going to do?
They would, they would work with code, probably where they would be assigned, and just help address additionally to what code's already doing, but help address even more the litter that we're seeing out there, the legal dump sites and those kind of things. We have, we have an issue in Longview, and we're trying to address it.
Will it have anything to do with code enforcement on trash around houses and stuff like that?
They can help with that. They can. One of the, one of the things about the grant, though, it's got to be all about the litter. And so we can consider that litter, and they're okay with that. They, you know, when we start getting into structures and stuff, that would be a little bit different, but as long as we're sticking with the litter.
Okay, thank you.
So are you satisfied with that one?
Yeah, we've had some issues on some code stuff, Michael and them have, that's been in my district, and that kind of piqued my interest a little bit.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to approve that now?
I'd make a motion to be approved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Now we'll go to S, Mr. Moore.
Currently, for non-bid contracts and items, we have a $50,000 ceiling before it comes to council. The proposal removes that ceiling completely, and I just don't feel comfortable relinquishing council oversight for contracts for which there is no ceiling. A point, and I see Mr. Cure in the, in the audience, in June, we approved a, a contract for $1,857,000 for Enterprise Resource Planning System, and Justin's rationale and presentation was, was logical. It was easy to understand, and there was no question, but I just think that something this size needs to come before council, and under the proposal, this would not have come to council. Is that correct?
I believe that would have because it was still a competitive process. They had a request for proposal, but I understand.
RFP still have to come to council, correct?
Yes, that's a competitive process. Anything with a competitive process.
I would just feel more comfortable putting a ceiling on here, something higher than $50,000. I think in today's municipal government, $50,000 is too low, and, you know, the number can be anything, but I would just ask that this be amended with a ceiling.
Can we, can we either provide a ceiling tonight and approve this, or have you come back with a ceiling and let us approve it at the next meeting?
Either way.
If you have a comfortable ceiling, Mr. Moore, and I agree, it's always been $50,000 and then $10,000 for change orders. And so, but, but that's, that's probably antiquated at this point in time, because that's probably been in effect for some number of years. And so I don't think it's illogical to have a higher ceiling where it has to come to council. But I do, I do like the fact that we do need to still have some oversight so that we can, we can still approve and get to hear logical discussion on things that pertain to city government, so.
And most of these items are on the consent agenda, but still, I think it's incumbent upon us to review those items.
And let the audience understand, we get a consent agenda, and we approve it as one lump sum, but we read everything that goes. We have backup, and we have paperwork on everything that comes across this consent. We don't just say, okay, rubber stamp it and go. That's why we get to have a chance to pull items off for discussion, as we have tonight, and we do that quite often. And we usually come to great agreements, understandings, and we move forward. So why don't we, why don't we do this? Can we bring it back at the next meeting with an appropriate ceiling that council is comfortable with and that staff is comfortable with so that we can move forward with this, with this discussion in our next meeting? Is that appropriate?
I move to table this item till the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, we're now to zoning, correct? I lost my place, have I? Zoning, hearing to consider it, M1901. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack. Members of council, Mr. Bonds. This is a public hearing to consider application M1901 that would amend the City of Longview sign ordinance, Chapter 85, that would allow for digital billboards. First thing I want to talk about is, this was direction, this is the direction that was from city council that we took and used to draft the ordinance, and I am happy to say that everything on that slide is in the ordinance with one minor exception. And I want to point that out, that the number 1,600 square feet, the faces removed must add up to at least 1,600 square feet. We looked at that, and with some feedback, we lowered that to 1,200. That would allow a little flexibility because of just the difference of sizes of billboards that are out there in the industry, and we felt that it still meets the intent of what council directed us to do and what we feel like is appropriate moving forward. Outside of that, I have a number of slides that I can go through if you'd like me to, or I can just kind of zip through them and hit the highlight.
Thank you, sir.
You know, we went through and basically amended definitions, added some new definitions, if I can keep up my pointer with the slides that I'm on. And then for the most part, the meat of it, which is what we already talked about, is the direction that y'all gave us on, you know, removing four to get one, you know, the maximum size being 400, you know, which is really going to take our sign ordinance from where it was that really slowed down new billboards. This will allow, you know, kind of that even-sided, will allow some new technology, but it will also promote a reduction in sign locations and some of the overall sizes, because some of the signs that if they choose to replace, say one that's like 600 square feet, and they put a 400 square feet digital retrofit, the other side of that sign, the static sign, will have to be retrofitted to a 400. So there's a raw opportunity to see change in the billboard, you know, landscape across town while still having, you know, positive influence with the business community, with the general public that desires the services, so. And I would be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
This item does require public hearing, which is now open, and I do have a speaker card. Mr. Mark Priestner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Priestner, Planning Concepts, 3815 O' Bullard Road in Tyler. First of all, I want to thank y'all for taking up this item very expeditiously. I really want to commend Michael and his staff for reaching out and seeking input from professionals on both sides of the issue to come up with, with an ordinance that is a step in the right direction. When we look at the original billboard ordinance that was passed in 2003, technology has come a long way since then. You can look around this room and look at the impacts of changes in technology with the screens in front of you, the flat screens on the walls, you know, this council chambers looks a lot different than it did 15 years ago. To put it in perspective, the original ordinance was written four years before the very first iPhone was introduced. So technology has changed, and what this has allowed Longview to do is look at other communities and see what's worked and what hasn't worked. The important thing, though, is to go back and look at what were the goals and objectives of that original ordinance, reducing clutter, reducing the number of signs, and improving the aesthetic qualities of the major corridors in and around Longview. So it's important to look back at that as we look forward to what is this new ordinance. So as we look at it, even though we're changing, and it's a significant change over what was there, we're looking at a four-to-one reduction over a two-to-one reduction. From the development side, you know, are we happy with that? Not really, but it's a step in the right direction. And I think that it still promotes those goals of reducing the clutter, reducing old signs, you know, helping get rid of dilapidated signs by promoting new, you know, more, more uniform kind of style and, and sizes. The other thing that it allows us to do is if you look at, how many times have we seen a billboard that's advertising a gun and ammo show that happened three months ago, and it's still up, and it just has one weekend on it? You know, these digital signs allow for those to be updated, and in addition to that, they allow for emergency access information like Amber Alerts and other emergency messages to be displayed. So I think it's important that you couple that with the comprehensive plan that really wants to promote new, good development, promote business growth in the town, and look at it from that standpoint. And I think that this ordinance, I think staff has done a really good job. We've gone back and forth and looked at a number of different scenarios, and they've been very active in looking at how to best accomplish this. And I think the ordinance that's before you today is a step in the right direction in that it protects all of those original goals of the original billboard ordinance while promoting new development, good development, and still cleaning up those corridors that we want to have from a tourist standpoint. So on behalf of Woodmont Company and Lamar, we thank you and encourage you to approve this.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers on this subject, any questions of Mr. Shirley on this subject?
Move to approve.
Public hearing is now closed.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, I want to thank you all for your indulgence in this, because this has been a process that I think, as Mr. Priestner said, we worked quickly and efficiently and came to a conclusion that I think is going to be better for the community all the way around. So my hat's off to every one of you all. Every one of you all played a role in this, and I appreciate the diligence of staff and those developers. Mr. King, thank you, sir, for your, yours as well, and Lamar, thank you all, all you guys for being here and participating and making this come together quickly like it should have. Appreciate y'all. Okay, we are now to a discussion item, discuss the expanding and apprenticeship and career technology education opportunities in the city of Longview. What I wanted to do, counsel, is bring this before you all real quickly. I wanted you all to, to kind of see what was going on. Last year, our community came together to create the East Texas Advanced Manufacturing Academy. Purpose of that academy is to educate high school students from throughout the region and prepare them for careers in our local industry. This academy is a result of the collaboration between many partners, including the local industry, Leadco, Chamber, several educating partners as well. LISD is currently handling all the administrative responsibilities for this academy. LISD is also considering creating additional charter schools within their district. The charter effort is part of the Texas Education Agency's effort called System of Great Schools, which brings additional state funding. And what that means is, that means with the charter school designation, they get funds from the state, and we're talking about large funds that, that allow a number of things, and I'll get back to that in just a minute. So LISD is considering combining the Advanced Manufacturing Academy and the Early Graduation High School under a single charter. The goal is to increase apprenticeship opportunities and allow students to graduate early, ready for the local workforce. If Longview ISD moves forward, they would use, they would issue a call for an organization to administer the charter. Charters can be operated by various types of organizations such as independent nonprofits, local governments, or colleges or universities. So as the mayor, I recommend the city and/or city staff be involved in answering the call to administer the charter through the creation of a nonprofit. As mayor, I recommend the board of the nonprofit include representatives from the city, from Leadco, industry and businesses. And so we say, why is the city involved? Although Longview ISD is involved, this is really an effort that is beneficial for all of Longview, and here's why. Regardless of the school district, if we take a broad citywide approach to this effort, it is going to help every student be able to attend this academy free of charge. That's what the charter designation does. It allows enough money to be brought in to this academy to allow every school to send their kid there without having to pay for it. Right now, they have to pay a certain amount. I think it's a little over $1,000 a student to attend the academy. And with this charter school designation, it allows that fee to go away. And it makes it where it's, this is not an LISD thing. This is a citywide school that any of the kids that attend Longview or surrounding areas can come into this charter academy, and they can gain skills and knowledge and be able to go into the workforce and be productive. And I think, number one, that academy is so vitally important to today's education because not every kid's going to college. Not every kid has the opportunity to go to college even if they want to. Not every kid can afford to go to college. So to provide them with something where they can come out of high school with a, with a skill, a tool, an ability to make a living, a good living, in a workforce ready-made for them right here in Longview where they're going to stay anyway. You know, 75% of the kids that graduate high school don't leave to go to college, they stay right here in Longview. Well, those 75% of the kids don't all, don't all have a career or a skill or a technical ability to make a living, so they, they turn to other vices, and that's what we don't want to have. We want to give them the opportunity to come out of that, that syndrome of not having the ability to provide themselves and make a better choice. And as I said before, this can be a generational change for the city of Longview, for kids that want to stay here, that have to stay here, now they have a reason to stay, and a purpose for being here, and an ability to provide for themselves and their family, and be proud of what they're doing. And so I think it's, I think it's imperative that we embrace this. I just think that, and there'll be no direct council involvement with this. This will not cost the city of Longview anything. This is just a designation from the state to become a charter campus, and with that designation become, that designation affords us more money. And the money will be utilized to educate kids and give them the opportunity. So I think it's worthwhile. I applaud Dr. Wilcox for bringing this to us to allow us to be involved in this, because I don't care what you say, education is part of city government, because there is not a business that comes here to look at Longview, doesn't ask about our education system. That's part of our city. And so there's no reason we have a barrier between education and government, because it's all the same. They're all citizens of Longview. We need to provide the same thing, just like we provide police and fire. We need to provide an educational opportunity. If we can do that by helping in this endeavor, then I think that we should. Unless you can feel there's a reason not to, I propose that we, we don't have to take any action, we just have to propose to move forward with this designation and let, let them, you know, apply for the charter designation for these schools.
So one comment, is the city's role more of a promotional?
Absolutely. And what this, the way I see this known is very simple. You know, LISD, Pantry ISD, Spring Hill ISD, Halsall ISD, they have ability to promote within themselves. That's what they do. City of Longview has the ability to promote the entire city. We don't have to maintain one school district. We can promote the entire city. We can have educational opportunities to promote the city of Longview, to businesses, to industry, to get industry involved. We, as a city, can get industry involved a whole lot easier than the school system can get industry involved, because we deal with them all day, every day. And I think that's where we have the leg up on this. That's where we can make the, the leg up on this, that's, that's where we can make a difference, in getting that, that opportunity out there. I think we can help promote to families, because, you know, you can't just tell a kid who's 16 years old or 15 years old, "Hey, we got a great opportunity for you," they don't get it yet, they're not, they don't get it yet, but I guarantee you, their parents get it, and their grandparents get it, and if we can promote to them and help them become educated, they'll help those kids make good decisions, and they'll enroll in these, in these, this free opportunity to have a career ahead of them. It's an amazing opportunity we have, and we need to just take more advantage of it, because we haven't done that, and we should, and I think the city should be involved. There's no reason to say we can't be involved in education, because we can.
Is that true?
We're not trying to provide curriculum, or administration, or policy, we're just providing support, and I think we should provide support, because we can.
What, uh, kind of involvement did, did Dr. Wilcox have from the other schools? I mean, were they all interested in?
I think they all are, but, but, but finances are always a barrier, Steve, and, and it's unfortunate, but, but the schools have financial restraints, just like we have budget restraints, and you know, when you're, when you're asking a school to take a kid out of their campus and put him in another campus-
They lose money.
-and pay for it, it's hard, but when you're asking to take him out of their campus, put him in another campus, and it's free, it becomes a whole lot easier, and I think that's where we need to be looking at this, is if, if that's the concept that can take place, then I think it's a win, and I'm not, there's no guarantee that they'll get it or they'll get the money, but if they can and they do, we should be supportive of that. And so that's up to them to do it, and to apply, and to get it, and if they do, I think we should be there to support and, um, encourage and, um, advertise for them, and be advocates for them, because we all have a school district in our, in our, in our districts, every one of y'all represent a school district, so, uh, and they're all different, you know, so why wouldn't we be involved in that? Questions? Okay, I take that as that we're going to be involved, if this can so for, if this can so take place and go forward, then I think we will be advocates for this process to continue. Thank you all for your indulgence. Okay. How does the community interest? Mr. Moore?
Well, for my Sesquicentennial moment tonight, I would like to talk about the Longview Cannibals. During the 17-year span from 1895 to 1911, we had a semi-pro team, the Longview Cannibals. They had a legacy of success, they never experienced a losing season, and they won championships in 1908 and 1909. Pictured here is the 1903 team. Later, in their 44-year history with our town, the Longview Cannibals were a semi-pro minor league team, and were a farm club of the Chicago White Sox from 1934 to 1939. So, our oldest existing business, Ganz and Smith, established in 1889, is sponsoring, in cooperation with Laterno, Longview ISD, and Pine Tree ISD baseball teams, they will have a Cannibals baseball reenactment on Saturday, March 21st, 2020, 2:00 PM, at Laterno. You don't want to miss this.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Noddy.
Good evening, everyone, I was just wondering how they came up with that name, Cannibals, I was real, okay.
That's not what I thought he said, I should be telling you.
Yeah, I didn't either at first. Uh, just want to say thank you to the residents in, of District 2, those who hosted National Night Out, uh, not only that they have great food, but there were so many people in attendance of every party that I went to, so, great job for, uh, the residents in, in District 2, keep up the good work. Also, we, yeah, there he is, I don't know if to say, Officer Pastor or Pastor Officer LaDarian Brown will be installed as our minister at the Parkview Baptist Church, 2014 South Green Street, where you can't go wrong when you make Parkview your home, on Sunday, um, October 13th at 3:00 PM, I would like to invite you guys out, uh, we're looking forward to having a great time and great fellowship, along with great food on that day, so if you're not busy, come on out and let's celebrate, uh, his installation as our senior pastor. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Noddy. Mr. Wade?
I have nothing tonight, sir.
Ms. Ishihara?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright?
I have one thing here, um, I, I want to brag on one of our young men from Spring Hill and our football team. Uh, last Friday, Spring Hill made the two and a half or three-hour drive down to Sillsby, Texas to play Sillsby, and I believe everybody who picked on the newspaper, including our Mr. Isaac, picked Sillsby.
Our record is horrible, so.
They picked Sillsby, and in three-quarters of a game, we won 45 to 7 or something like that, they called the game because of lightning, and we were kind of dominating. Anyway, um, Gage White was the Offensive Player of the Week in the paper, and I just wanted to read you what he did. Against Sillsby White, a senior, completed 20 of 27 passes for 461 yards and six touchdowns with no interceptions. Included in the big night for White, who has passed for more than 4,200 yards and 41 touchdowns in the past three seasons, was a 99-yard pitch and catch to Jay Rockwell, who finished with six catches for six, for 174 yards and three touchdowns. So I just want to congratulate Gage and Spring Hill Football Team, they're off to a pretty good start for the year, which we haven't necessarily seen over the last few years.
Mr., Mr. Birdle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds?
I love everything.
Okay, I have a few things. First off, I want to just quickly mention, um, although we, we did this in our, then, the Leadco Board of Directors, um, we have some new appointments, David Cooley will be doing his first three-year term, uh, as a direct, as a voting member, Natalie Lynch will be reappointed for her second three-year term, we have some, um, ex-official members of non-voting board, Rod Bull will be appointed to his, appointed to his second term, and the new appointments this year, we have Aaron Oates, Pete Lamont, and Ranjit Kadali, all into the non-voting members, so we have a very, very strong slate of Leadco, uh, officers and voting and non-voting members, so I'm very pleased about that, and I thank you for the Leadco Board for providing this for us and, uh, getting us such good, uh, representation to represent our city. Our upcoming events, Haunted Library, Friday and Saturday, October 18th and 19th, man, I love haunted houses, but darn, I have nightmares about it sometimes. Downtown Live, Friday, November 1st, this week features Junk Drawer Music. Say that again, is that who it is? Just Junk Drawer Music?
Yep.
That's the name of the band?
Junk Drawer Music Presents.
That's what, this Presents is the part of it, yeah, okay, okay, Junk Drawer Music Presents, I bet they're gonna be good, I can't wait. Uh, we have Monster Dash on Saturday, October 12th, East Texas Symphony Band Performance on Monday, October 14th, Horror Festival Livestock Show Wednesday, Saturday, October 23rd to the 26th, for more information, go to longviewtexas.gov/calendars or longviewtexas.com/events. Okay, survey time. Which of the following arts organizations have you enjoyed in Longview? And you can respond to more than one. Let's just put the numbers up there, because it's pretty impressive, I love these numbers. Uh, look at that, 51%, 23%, 76%, you know, what it shows is, and these are a number of our opportunities in Longview, and, and all of our participated in, and, and 11% have not been able to participate in these, hey, plenty of opportunities coming up, help yourself, go, enjoy, we have a lot of things going on in Longview, and that's why this cultural arts designation is so important to us, just to show that we, we do have opportunity here for, um, arts and, and, uh, it's just amazing, I'm, I'm so excited about this, I was glad to see this survey and how many people participated in it, and how many people have gone to the events that we take place in. Okay, at the first time of Cold Front, what is your favorite way to kick off fall? This, this surprised me, I, 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 I lost on this one, okay, put them up, 23% said a pot of chili or stew, you can't go wrong with that, 13% a fire in the fireplace, 7% light up fall smelling candles, all the guys said that. No? 11% pull out your fall wardrobe, this one surprised you, 13% said watch football, and 30%, 33% said actually enjoy the outdoors, I thought watch football would be way, way higher than that, but I think it's neat that there's, we are getting to the, to the fall time of the year, some cooler weather around the corner, hopefully, um, it's a lot of fun things happening in the fall, and I'm looking forward to every one of them, so, uh, next, next meeting, I'm sure our survey question will have something to do with Halloween candy, I guarantee you, so if anything else, then we will be adjourned, thank y'all for attending.